Wanted to get.
Are we ready? All right. Thank you. It's 5:15, our regular meeting, and we are at Purple Heart City, and we had a proclamation down at the PIBUS with 100 people, and I see Mr. Nicholas in the audience, and he served in the war, and he's in the Army, and Vietnam War, is that correct, Mr. Nicholas? So I'd like you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you would, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next is our roll call. We have a couple city council to have a motion to excuse them.
Your Honor, I'll move to excuse Councilmember Huffaker and Councilmember Harold from tonight's
Second. There's been a motion by Councilmember Rodenstein and second by Councilmember Hornby to excuse Councilmember Huffaker and Harold for tonight's meeting. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we have a citizen comments. It's limited to three minutes. We ask you to step up to the mic and state your name and address for the record, and if it's regarding the one hearing item, do we have a public hearing item? We can wait for that. That's the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action. If I believe everybody's here that wants to speak has to do with none of that. So who would like to come up first to the mic for three minutes of their time, so we can listen to you? Come on, come on up, please.
Go ahead, sir. You go first. Whoops, go ahead.
No, we got Mr. Nicholas.
You're already up.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Mike Poyer for coming over to my house. When I came down here and I asked to make an appointment, and he wasn't available at the time, next thing I know, he's knocking at my door, and when was the last time you had anybody, a public official, knock at your door except for your vote? So I was, I was appreciative of that. Thank you. Secondly, what I had come down here for originally was my water, garbage, and sewer bill. I'm 76 years old and have been retired since I was 62, and when I retired, my, I was living just fine. I had a small teemster pension while at that time, it was nice and big. Today's market, my pension stayed the same. Everything has gone up, including water, garbage, and sewer, and the same with my social security. Now, they tell you, the misnomer here is they tell you that your social security goes up with inflation, and that is true. It goes up 4%, your social security goes up 4%, but so does Medicare, exact same time. Medicare goes up 4%. It goes up 10%, Medicare goes up 10%. So you don't win with social security. It's basically frozen in time, except for that Medicare thing, you know? You still have those benefits, but what I'm saying is, I had a $420 bill the day after Mike showed up at my house. I received in the mail a bill for $420, and basically, the reason I had come down to begin with is because the day before, I had been thinking, well, I gotta make it to the third Wednesday of the month so I can pay my bill, but they came by and they turned my water off at my house. So I had to grab the old credit card out and pay the bill immediately. Well, it was my fault because I had missed it the month. I was thinking it was due that month, but it had been the month before that it was due, and I paid the bill, so it was totally my fault that I was late. My point is, is I went, came down here, and I thought, well, okay, I'm 76, my income is frozen in time, I need a break. I'm gonna go down and see if I can get a break at the city. I went down to the city, and they said, it depends on your income. Well, I'm working a part-time job to make ends meet right now, so that means that I don't qualify, because my income, along with my wife's social security and my small pension and everything, amounted about $57,000. Well, duh, I can't, they're $48,000 there. My thought was, anybody that's made it to the other end and paid their dues and taxes and stuff shouldn't have to pay. Oh, I'm out of time, you guys.
I'm gonna give you another minute. Yeah, I think, I think we wanna, we'll give you another minute, okay?
Okay, thank you. I think it should be based on your age only and percentage of income. In other words, if you're 62, obviously, I could make it when I was 62. If you're 70, your, your income frozen there, all of a sudden, everything keeps going up. I can't stop that, but you guys can stop it and say, look, okay, when you're 70, you only have to pay 50%. When you're 80 or 90, maybe 70 or 100% is discounted. I don't know, but what I'm saying is it needs to be decided. I had a post on Facebook, I had 400 people jump in and like it, and I had 190 comments on this alone, and I think 90 shares, they share, other people shared. I'm sad that they didn't, because I invited them to this meeting too, but any rate, 400 likes and 90 shares tells me right there that I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Yeah, what I'd like you to do, if, if you can somehow like screenshot the comments, maybe somehow, if we can get those comments, or we can figure out what those comments, and then we can put them in for public record. We had had discussion with Finance Committee this week and for reevaluation, so it's, we're looking at things. We look at it periodically every two or three years. We have some statutes. I know by law that we have to do, but we're also, we are evaluating it and looking at it again as an office. So our finance person, Mr. Postenjack's here, and then I know that's something we're reviewing. So you've already started something. Doesn't mean we're gonna give you what you want, but it means that we're looking at it, and I think it's, again, it's very important that you're here.
Two things. When you examine and stuff, get some seniors on there. You guys' income has not been frozen. Your mom and dads might have, and if they're still alive, they're, they're doing the same thing I'm doing and a lot of other seniors are doing. Get them on your committee to help come up with a solution. And second thing, I, I ask that you eliminate the income requirement totally, because our wages are frozen in time, and now if I quit my part-time job, it'll still, next year, I won't qualify, because I've already worked half a year as part-time. So it'll be a year and a half before I can even qualify for the senior discount on this thing. Get rid of the income. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you again for coming in.
Thank you.
Who's next? Come on up.
I'm Charlie Hickenbottom, 127 South Franklin here in Wenatchee. I had some good vibes about the Purple Heart, so I hope I get 15 extra seconds. My dad was a World War II vet in the Philippines and lost part of his leg, and he was in that generation that gave a lot. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Council Harold, not gonna be able to thank her. Mayor Poyer, thank you for voting for complete streets policy in 2016. Your votes were important and have resulted in many improvements for pedestrians, bicyclists, bus riders. Good job. Today, I also come to thank the current city council for listening to my suggestion of adding additional bicycle parking at the convention center. Public Works Elisa Schaefer contacted me on July 26th with information about planning for additional racks to be added to the remodel plan. Thank you. Okay, mid-July, you listened to Reimagine Wenatchee. Big meeting for you to take in a lot of information by presentation by Northwest Studio. Councilmember Roganostheian suggested we move forward slowly, taking what we already have and try to improve it. On July 29th, I sent a lengthy response to Mayor, City Council, Public Works regarding Columbia Street from a bicycling perspective. I reviewed 25 years of downtown Wenatchee bicycle history and made suggestions for the future of bicycling infrastructure. While the city council takes more public testimony on the merits of spending $20 million on a complete makeover of Columbia Street, the council should consider the advice of Council Roganostheian to move forward slowly and carefully. What the city of Wenatchee has currently for bicycle infrastructure in downtown Wenatchee is the Kidattas Fuller Bike Route connects Confluence Campus right down to Columbia on Kidattas Street. We have the First Street Bikeway coming right down to Columbia Street. That's, that's all. The council should consider a bicycle route on Columbia Street from Kidattas to First as a connection to what we already have. Very low costs include bike route signs and bike share markings placed on the pavement. When the PUD finishes Electric Avenue, a couple years away.
You can stay for another 30 seconds for, for, to honor your father.
I am really close. With the PUD finishes Electric Avenue, it will be a simple and inexpensive addition to extend the bike route north to connect with Electric Avenue. If you provide the bicycle infrastructure now, you will find more people interested in living, shopping, and bicycling downtown. Thank you for listening.
Thanks for being here. Somebody who looks like a chef out there would like to come up.
Thank you, thank you. So yeah, this is my first time ever at a city council meeting, so thank you guys for having me, and thank you to Mr. Cuevas for the invitation.
Don't forget your name and address for it.
Yes, sorry. So my name is Carlos Caralas. I live in 124 North James, but I do have a business here in Wenatchee over at the Crepe House, where we're celebrating our one-year anniversary, and we are very excited to have hit our milestone. So in order to make our celebration big, we decided to partner up with Project Backpack Buddies with the goal of raising 500 backpacks for kids in our community and our foster care system. So we are doing a fundraiser right now, lasting all month long, to collect school supplies, hygienic products, and other essential items for these kids. I'm still kinda new to the city or to Wenatchee, so getting to know some of these contacts where I can potentially get some of these donations is greatly appreciated. I know I have sent out some invitations already. I do have some more flyers of invitations of anybody that would like to participate. And again, we are taking any type of donation, so any funds, any school supplies, any hygienic products, we're trying to collect. And again, our goal is 500 backpacks for these kids. The end of the day, if we can beat our record and go bigger even more. So we started with 100, we beat that, we're going on to 500 already. So yeah, thank you for your time. If you guys, again, have any contacts or anything like that that will help me achieve this goal, thank you. And yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Carlos. If you can leave staff with a few flyers, that'd be great. We'll take some of your flyers and see what we can help you out with. Anybody else? Mr. Snyder, you're back there. You got anything? Okay, put you on the spot, buddy. All right, I guess our public comment is over, so we'll go to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings and move for a city council to authorize the mayor to sign and execute easement agreements with East Wenatchee Hotel Partners LLC for construction of new shared-use path bridge in the city of East Wenatchee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rodenstein and second by Councilmember Euer to approve agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meeting for city council to authorize the mayor to sign and execute easement agreements with East Wenatchee Hotel Partners LLC for construction of a new shared-use path bridge in the city of East Wenatchee. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Well, it's been about a year or so, so now we're gonna have a little update presentation by Manuel Navarro. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on what's going on at Columbia Valley Community Health. Certainly, what I feel is a valuable community asset and wanting to bring up on some good news. So as Mayor indicated, it's been about a year since I presented. My name is Manuel Navarro. I am the CEO at Columbia Valley Community Health. I've been the CEO for approximately two years now, actually, a little over two years. July was my anniversary. I've been with the organization, however, for 13 years, so I've seen it grow and certainly have been blessed with the opportunity to grow myself in, into the role and, and take on the helm at CVCH. I guess I first want to acknowledge, as I, let me see if I can get this going. So I do want to acknowledge that it is National Health Center Week, and this is an opportunity across the United States to recognize the commitment of our hard-working providers, staff, community volunteers who run and work at community health centers over approximately 15,000 cities in the United States, a little over 1,400 organizations, and in total, this past year, we served over 31 million patients out through the United States. So definitely, community health centers are integrated into the fabric of our primary care system, and will continue to do so for many years to come. Just a little history. I know I shared some of this last time, but I think it's important to remember and recognize just kind of the origins of community health centers. The health center movement started in the 60s through the work of the migrant rights through Cesar Chavez on the West Coast and through some of the inner-city, Dr. Geiger in some of the inner-city work that he was doing in Boston, Massachusetts in the 60s, and in 1965, President Lyndon B. Johnson recognized, created Section 330 of the Bureau of Primary Care, recognizing federally qualified health centers as an official department and with special funding for it. And the intent was to provide affordable, high-quality, comprehensive primary care to medically underserved populations regardless of their insurance status or ability to pay. So it's been around for a while. It wasn't until the 2000s where there was a significant growth in, in community health centers through bipartisan support. President George Bush, as when he was the governor of Texas, saw the great work that the community health centers were doing in many of the rural communities throughout his state, and was really impressed with the resiliency of these organizations in providing high-quality care to the most in need with very limited resources. So as he stepped into the presidency, he really felt like community health centers were a way to address the, the growing primary care access problem that we were facing and currently are throughout the United States. And as you can see, his goal was to fund a health center or clinic in every poor county in America. So by doing that, he significantly boosted the number of community health centers throughout the United States and, and continued the growth. A couple of key characteristics as a federally qualified health center. We have to serve as, or specifically be placed in an area that's underserved area or population. We are not-for-profit, tax-exempt organizations. We have to provide a comprehensive set of holistic services, which include medical, dental, behavioral health, and pharmacy services. We cannot turn anybody away for inability to pay. We're not a free clinic, but we, we charge for everything we do, but we have to provide access on a sliding fee scale based on income. We have to continue high-quality assurance and reporting to the U.S. government through the universal data set that we operate, that we provide every year, and we operate under the governing board of which have to be, of which a minimum of 51% have to be patients or users of the services. So always proud to show off our current board members, members of the community. We have Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, and Shalan residents, and we're actually lucky that about 70% of our board members are actually users of our service. And much like you, they're really, they feel, they're purpose-driven, and they volunteer about 10 hours a month in various committees and, and meetings to make sure that we, as an organization, are meeting the needs of our community and driving us forward appropriately. My executive team, I just wanted to share a bit. Again, many of these residents of Wenatchee and, and East Wenatchee, and certainly as the CEO, I get a lot of the glory, but trust me, I couldn't do it without the high-quality executive team that, that does all of the daily work and makes things keep moving forward the way we do. So much of the success that I'm gonna share today is because of the hard work they do and wanted to recognize them. Last year, I talked about the growth and the ongoing need for providing care in our community, and we realize that and know that the only way we're going to increase access to care is to continue growing our organization, primarily our providers. You can see the graph looks at traditionally how many providers, new providers, we were onboarding every year. In 2023, we onboarded over 60 new providers throughout our different service lines: primary care, medical, family medicine providers, midwifery, pediatricians. We onboarded a considerable amount of behavioral health providers, because we want to, we know there's a need for that in the community and want to see that grow, and then, of course, we onboarded more dentists and other staff. So we're, we were very busy. It's a big investment for sure, but we know that our community needs access to care, and the only way to do that is to have the providers available. So we're happy to see that we were able to accomplish a lot of that, and we continue to grow. In 2023, we ended the year with about 481 FTE employees. When I started, we were a little over 200 employees. So over the course of almost 10 years, we've more than doubled the number of employees at CVCH, all community members who work in the area. And in '23 alone, you can see that 32% growth in that year alone. So really committed to growing and supporting the providers that we brought on board. You know, as the quote says, "The road to success is always under construction," so I wanted to give the council an update on just kind of our construction projects to accommodate that growth. Our East Wenatchee campus, last time I presented, we were in the process of just opening the Medical Dental Behavioral Health Building that is currently in full swing, and we have that, we anticipated being fully staffed in that clinic after a year. We were fully staffed in that clinic after four months. And just as a note, in East Wenatchee, one of the biggest areas we know that have access issues is dental for adult patients on Medicaid. When we opened that clinic in September, in, by the time I checked in March, when I was reporting to the legislature, we had provided access to over 900 new adult patients on Medicaid for dental services alone. So those were patients who most likely were not receiving dental care anywhere else in our community because of their insurance status, and very proud to see that. And again, the, the service is filled up very quickly over in East Wenatchee. We are currently in the process of finishing up another building in that area, and that will be a behavioral health-focused building where it'll allow us to double the space that we have for our behavioral health team, which is one of the main reasons we were really focused on bringing in new behavioral health providers to get that filled up. So we're anticipating having that building completed and open sometime in January of '25, and hope to continue to hire and bring on new behavioral health providers to fill that building out. The original building that was there, we will continue, we'll reopen. It's closed right now. We're gonna reopen it as an express care, similar to our express care model that we have here. So again, increasing capacity for some of that urgent same-day appointment needs that our community have. We currently lease a building out in Easy Way, and that's where our Children's Behavioral Health Department currently sits. Once we open the new building in our, on our East Wenatchee campus, we will move that team to that building, freeing up the space. We've secured a Commerce Grant from the state, and we'll use some of our own capital budget to remodel the Easy Way building and continue to expand our substance use disorder program that's currently housed over on Miller Street. We, we have six substance use disorder therapists, and we have no more room for growth, and we have three new ones coming to increase us to eight. Our hope is that we'll almost double the size of our substance use disorder program as well. It's an unfortunate reality, but you know, that we need more substance use disorder treatment, but we want to make sure that we meet that need to help the people who are trying to overcome the addiction disease that they face every day. So we'll, that our substance disorder will be in the Easy Way, and so continue to grow that area. We just recently purchased some more land up by our Shalan clinic, and again, addressing the behavioral health needs of Shalan and Douglas County, have about a five-to-10-year plan for building, a new building up there to increase access for behavioral health as well. Our clinical outreach team continues to focus on our community clinics going out to neighboring communities like Orondo, Peshastin, Rock Island, and Malaga. So we have ongoing, our, our mobile clinic also serves the city Wenatchee housing, the homeless housing camp over, over towards Shalan. I forget, I'm not from Wenatchee.
Safe Park 2?
Safe Park 2.
Yes, I seen there.
Yeah, so, and we continue to do a lot of outreach and other community partners throughout the city of Wenatchee, and so very proud of that. And then, we just recently closed on a building on Walla Walla Avenue, commonly called the Craftson Building. It's 910 Walla Walla Avenue on the corner of, right around the corner of Walla Walla and 9th, and we are working to renovate that and use that for more administrative space for our billing team, call center, IT, that we need to continue to grow because of the need to support the growing services and teams that we have. So as I said, just happy to, to share a little bit about our continued growth as we work to serve the needs of our community members here in Wenatchee and Shalan Douglas County. I shared last year our vision that our, that our executive team and board had devised when I stepped into the CEO role. I just want to reiterate that, you know, CB, our vision as an organization is to provide the best access to whole-person care for underserved individuals in North Central Washington. And I have three words there that are in bold, and I just wanted to further define what we mean by those three words. When we talk about access, really, it's about providing affordable, timely, and convenient care for the, our community members. I think we do a good job of providing affordable care, you know, certainly the sliding fee. A person who's on 100% slide, the most they'll pay for a medical visit is $40, and then, of course, we just scale up as based on income. The timely and the, the timely and the convenient, I think the biggest challenge for timely in any healthcare is just, it's a supply and demand issue. There's obviously more demand than there is supply in terms of provider access. We want to make sure that we continue to grow in our provider team to, to decrease that time and make sure that it is timely. And then convenient, looking at taking services directly to people, looking at telehealth, and, and then, of course, after hours. When we talk about whole-person care, really, it's about physical, mental, and social care, and I, we've done historically a great job with providing and focusing on that physical and mental, you know, our medical, dental, certainly for the physical, and then behavioral health for the mental. The area that I know that we have to grow in and improve on is addressing the social needs of our patients and making sure that those, those... needs of our patients and making sure that those, those items that really have more effect on their clinical health that need attention, housing, transportation, access to food, access to education. What can we do as an organization, not necessarily to directly provide the services, but to partner with a lot of the great organizations in our community right now that are addressing that? And really, you know, coordinating that care for all the same patients that we serve throughout the area. And then, of course, focusing on the underserved. We, we are committed to growing, but our goal is not to take over healthcare in Shalane Douglas County. Our goal will always be to focus on providing access to underserved individuals, which can include people who have very many barriers, whether it's where they live, lack of transportation, of course, financial, helping people find health coverage, and then making sure that needed healthcare services that aren't here, we bring on board so that our, our patients have access to those. So I'm very proud of our vision and just wanted to share that with you today, just to reiterate why we're doing what we do every day at C V C H. And that's to provide the best access to whole person care for underserved individuals in North Central Washington. Just a reminder, the services we provide, behavioral health, primary care, behavioral health, dental, pharmacy enabling services. And then the area that we serve, predominantly seventy-five percent of our patient population come from the main retros of where we have our clinics, Wenatchee, East Wenatchee and Shalane Manson area, you can see in the dark blue. But we do have an outreach of patients that come from a lot of the rural areas that we serve. And in two thousand twenty-three, through our twenty-five service sites, we served approximately a little over thirty-eight thousand unique patients. Of the people we served, thirty-eight percent of the people we served were below, reported incomes below a hundred percent of the federal poverty level. And that's basically a family of four making at or less than thirty thousand dollars a year. So definitely a lot of people who have some challenges making ends meet, and we don't want that to be a barrier to accessing care. We still serve a fair number of people who are uninsured, about sixteen percent at the end of the year. And the people are uninsured for a lot of different reasons. Either they don't qualify for a, a plan, or people just choose not to, or not to apply for insurance, or we have plenty of people who just prefer to pay out of pocket for their healthcare. And then as our origins and our continued focus is on migrant agricultural workers and serving that population, about twenty-six percent of our patients self-reported as being in a migrant seasonal agricultural worker or a spouse or family member of a migrant seasonal agricultural worker. So continue to grow in the number of patients we serve for sure. And then ultimately, as a community health center, our goal is to continue providing for a healthy community. Year after year, community health center care, care received at a community health center has proven to be higher quality than most care that anyone would receive other, other places. And if you think about it, we're not only providing high quality care, but we're doing that with people who have a lot less resources than they might find in, in a standard private practice or other community health center. So always proud of the work that our team does, always proud of the support and living up to our mission and making sure that we continue to keep Wenatchee and Shalane Douglas County very healthy across the board. It's not all, you know, roses and everything. We certainly have continued challenges and these aren't any, any different than any healthcare provider or any other industry really real. You know, payers from third parties continue to be less than what it costs us to deliver the care. Federal appropriations, part of our funding continues to be up for debate every three years, which makes it very difficult to plan long-term. You know, uninsured care continues to go up. And then, of course, retention and recruitment of key staff, there just are not enough health providers out there. We're fortunate that Wenatchee and Shalane are desirable places to live. I'm always cognizant of my colleagues who work in, you know, Joplin, Missouri is, you know, Sedalia where I'm from in Missouri and the challenges that they might have. If you put up Shalane versus Joplin, Shalane wins every time to come and live. So we're thankful for that, but it is still a challenge. And then, of course, ongoing capital needs, space, 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 and being able to have appropriate space for care that we want to provide. And that's it. So that's another year at C V C H and certainly invite any questions or comments from the council.
I got a few. So the, the behavioral health, are you having, I think you already hinted on that, you're having difficulties to hire people, even though Shalane's a Wenatchee and this area is great. Is it hard to get behavioral health individuals?
You know, of all of the service lines, we, you know, we really focused on increasing our behavioral health team this year. And we really feel, and we, that's probably been the easiest area to recruit in. Coming out of the pandemic, I think there was a lot of spotlighting on the needs for behavioral health services. And so people really saw that as an opportunity, as a career path as well. You know, there's a lot of people out there who want to help. And we, we're seeing an increase in the people of, a number of behavioral health professionals coming out of training programs. And so we feel that, you know, we can, we'll never be the highest paying organization. You know, we, we just can't, we're a community health center. But I always tell people, we promise we'll be the best place to work. We'll provide fantastic work facilities, we'll provide fantastic support, and we provide fair pay. So we've been lucky in the number of behavioral health. Before we started our initiative, we were around twelve to fourteen therapists. And right now we're sitting at around twenty. And our goal is to get up to twenty-eight soon. Our substance use disorder program continues to grow. And one of the things that we started doing there too is similar to, you know, we know that in order to get professionals, we're going to have to train our own. So we have a, we partnered with a program where we have two trainees, substance use disorder individuals. They come out with a high school degree, they, and they get, they do all of their didactic and training in two years at C V C H with the hope that we'll bring them on and train, and keep them as professionals as well. We have training in our behavioral medicine. We have a American Psychological Association accredited internship program for post-doc psychologists and, and psycho, and psych, psychologists. So we currently have four trainees and interns every year, and we've been fortunate enough to hire most of them as they come out of that training program as well. On, you know, so yeah, and then we have a residency up in Shalane where we, we graduate to family medicine providers every year. And we have several of them that have stayed on. And we have our dental residency program where we have two dental residents every year as well, and several of them stay on. So, you know, they're difficult to get, but we know we have to train our own. And what better person to hire than someone that you've trained yourself?
Sure. I, I'd like, I, I know you, you're definitely community involved. The behavioral health is, is a special thing, I think, that we'd like to get more, the city like getting more involved with you. And so we'll reach out to the person in charge there and see how we can coordinate that. We're going through a process now of hiring a anti-coord, homeless coordinator, and I think that'd be important to, like you say, to see how we can connect and not duplicate things.
Right, great.
And go that direction. The one on Miller Street's the, the.
New Path or Substance Use Disorder.
Yeah, that's the one you're out of space there, right? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great. No, we hear great, great things, but so I want to turn it over to the city council, some other questions they have? If none.
Just curious, on your behavioral health and the substance use, are those all outpatient services or do you also have inpatient?
No, we don't do inpatient services. The way that the state has contracted out inpatient services in Shalane Douglas County are managed by Catholic charities. And so they, and, and then, of course, I forget the organization that does the, the inpatient hospital there, but we are just focused on outpatient services. So our New Path program is a level one intensive outpatient entry. New patients come in, they come for about two, every day for about two weeks for intensive two to three hour sessions, and then gradually graduate into a once a month support group that can last for several months.
That's great, thank you.
Do you know much about Loretta Stouffer and the detox center that they're trying to bring back?
Yep, I do.
Eight beds? And, and are you guys involved with that at all to try to help that?
Again, we're not, you know, we're not focused on the inpatient side, but we are, we are in contact with her and, and have met with her a couple of times. You know, as you mentioned, our effort is not to duplicate services. Or if we're all trying to do the same thing, at least help coordinate that. So I think our focus will continue to be on kind of that primary lower level care area, which is our mission focus.
This is perfect. Thank you very much for coming. And then next year, if you're willing to come back.
I will.
We'd like to see updates every, every year and see how we're doing, communicating with you and.
Yep. Well, like I said, I look forward to any communication you have in terms of questions or partnerships. I know that the work that we do at the, at the homeless site is exciting for our team as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I like to learn things. Action item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director. And tonight, I believe I have both action items, so filling in for Mr. Terry O'Keefe and Mike Hodgson. So the first one, this is a couple of contract amendments for your consideration. And if you may recall, last year, we did an evaluation of our eight million gallon drinking water reservoir, which is the largest one we have in the city on Jefferson Street. And we also discovered that we have a leaky valve at Miller and Fifth. So Osborne Consulting was hired, they evaluated the tank, they're looking at the valves. And so these amendments are actually to move forward with the next phase of the project, which is to put together bid packages to be able to get this stuff fixed. So some of the things going on with the reservoir is we know that it is leaking. In fact, over the years, our system leakage has increased. Now we're over twenty percent, which is not a good place to be, but getting this reservoir fixed will help reduce that. So this is a priority project. So some of the repairs that we're looking, including would be to line the reservoir, which would help reduce leakage. There's also some safety improvements to repair ladders and access hatches, and also to make it safer to access by putting some railing around an access hatch on top of the tank. So, so amendment two is for the improvements to the tank. And amendment three would be for putting together some plans to be able to replace that valve at Fifth and Miller that's leaking. We, some of the additional information, you know, we had some cost estimates from Grand Osborne that if we were to do all the things to the tank, like one hundred percent, it would be about two point three million, but we picked probably the highest priority so we could stay within the budget, which is about one point three million for design and construction for those reservoir repairs. We hope if things move quickly and, and we're able to move forward, that we may even be able to get these repairs done this winter. The tank has to be shut off and out of service for several months for these repairs to happen. And we can only do that during the wintertime. So it'll either be this winter or next winter that the, this work is completed. But we would ask that you OK us to keep moving forward on this project. Can I answer any questions about the reservoir repairs?
And the valve would be done at the same time because the tank would be emptied?
That, that's exactly right, Councilmember Atkinson. This is, the valve is on the main transmission line to the tank. And so with that tank being out of service, it's a great time to drain that line and do this repair too. So we're glad we discovered it when we did because then we can incorporate it into this project.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve contract amendment two and three with Gray and Osborne Project Number twenty-three oh six unauthorized city administrator to sign the contract amendment.
Okay. It's a tie.
I defer. We have a motion by city council member Hornby and second by council member Euer for city council approve of contract amendments two and three with Gray and Osborne Project Number twenty-three oh six unauthorized city administrator to sign the contract amendments. Any discussion or comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, so our second contract proposal tonight is for a design of a new wastewater treatment plant administration building and a new garage at our public services center on McKittrick. So this was a project that came out of our wastewater facilities planning that we finished up in two thousand twenty-two. And what we discovered was, well, we knew we'd outgrown the building. In fact, we have staff that are working out of a maintenance shop and some staff that are working out of a portable trailer right now. And the building is at the end of its life. In fact, our mate, the janitorial service is scared to wax the floors that it might come apart. But that's not the, the biggest concerns, primarily that we've outgrown it and that there's some safety issues that need to be addressed. And we also have aging infrastructure underneath this building that are going to make it very challenging to replace those in the near future. And so through our planning process, the best alternative was really just to build a new administration building so that essentially in the future, the, the old one will be demolished and we'll be able to access that aging infrastructure and also address some of the safety concerns. Because right now that admin building is located over the influent pumping station, which doesn't meet current safety standards for people to be occupying that building. So this is a project we'd like to be able to continue to move forward with design. We're also looking at, we have our collections crew that cleans the sewer and stormwater system. All of their equipment is stored at the wastewater treatment plant, and they're based out of the public services center on McKittrick Street. So for efficiencies purposes, and again, to just create more space at the wastewater treatment plant so that we can store equipment inside and so that we can store our equipment inside at the public services center, we've combined these projects to do a new garage to be able to house our actor trucks and other equipment. Not only is this taking care of very expensive equipment, helps maintain and extend the life of that, but makes it readily available when we respond to emergencies in the wintertime. Otherwise, we have to winterize stuff. And so the space is pretty important. So it's kind of a dual project. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer it. This will be funded one hundred percent by the utilities split between water sewer, but mostly storm water, sewer will be paying the bulk of it, but all three will contribute.
I know, I know you mentioned safety a couple of times, but the planned administration building's got health issues for people even to be in it, isn't that correct?
Yeah, it doesn't have the right air handling for having.
I know, some of us have been in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we kind of got that quickly. Okay.
Didn't take us long to hear that out, did it?
It took us long to figure it out, a few months ago. Any other questions for Jessica?
No questions. I think this is a good plan. We reviewed it several times and, what committee do we sit on?
Public Services.
Public Services.
You've seen.
I've seen it there many times and it's much needed for all the reasons that you stated. With that, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the award of the design contract for the water treatment plant and administration, administration building and public services center utility garage project number twenty-four oh three to Jacobs Engineering authorized city administrator to sign the professional services contract for the design on behalf of the city.
Second. We have a motion by council member Hornby and second by council member Cuevas for city council approve the, the award of design contract for the wastewater treatment plant administration building and public service center utilities garage project number twenty-four oh three to Jacobs Engineering authorized city administrator to sign the professional services contract for the design on behalf of the city. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for all your effort on this. Yeah, it's, it's needed.
Thank your support, needed. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a public hearing meeting. Some rules. Staff will first give a report followed by public testimony. All speakers, please speak in microphone and clearly state your name and address. All comments should be addressed to the hearing body, should be relevant to the public hearing matter and should not be a personal nature. Public testimony may be limited to three minutes unless further time is granted. And I think we're ready. Glenn?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Glenn DeVries with Community Development, and we have.
Zach Horton, project engineer, city Wenatchee Department of Public Works.
And before. And before you this evening, we have a proposed annual action plan. Just stepping back a little bit, every five years, we do a consolidated plan. We receive funds from the Office of Housing and Urban Development. We're a recipient of those funds. This year, we received, let's see, $308,346, which is an increase over previous allotments, which is good news. So every five years, the council adopts a consolidated plan, which talks about what the eligible funds, fund priorities would be for spending these dollars. And then every year, what we do is we adopt an annual action plan, which says, okay, this is how we're going to spend the funds this calendar year. And then we come back in January and let you know how we did, were we successful, any lessons learned. So here we are today with a new funding allocation for our annual action plan. And again, we, I already mentioned how much we're receiving. We also have existing funds that we can put to a project, $561,817. One of the things that we've learned in the program and working with our representative from the federal government and our consultants is to really focus our program to be more efficient, so we're spending less staff time. And what that means is to just focus on a single project in a calendar year instead of multiple projects. And we'd received direction from the council to really focus on infrastructure needs. And Zach can talk about the project that we can fund. So we're excited to, about the partnership with Public Works. Zach and Natalie Anne have really gotten a good system down to meet our federal requirements because there are a lot of steps in using these funds. But working with our consultant and our representative at the federal government, we've, I think we've got a really good system in place. And we're just focusing on one project so we can be as efficient as possible, but make this a beneficial project for the city. And Zach, would you like to talk about what we're proposing to spend the money on this year?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, Zach Horton, project engineer, City of Wenatchee Department of Public Works. We're planning to use this entitlement fund to do infrastructure improvements along the First Street segment between Miller Street and Shalane Avenue. It's actually really just stopping about 100 feet east of Buchanan Avenue. And I don't know if you guys have driven up there, they have the traffic calming circles. And every single one of those intersections, they're kind of labeled A through Z, if you will, Buchanan, Cleveland, Delaware, Emerson, Franklin and Garfield. And essentially, over the next two to three years, we're hoping to do ADA improvements at every single one of those intersections. And as part of that, we'll be repaving those intersections and taking out some of the aggressive quarter crowns that exist out there. It's a very old road. And right now, we're doing some intense surveying efforts to really help support that effort going forward as well as doing some geotechnical exploration. So in a broad stroke, that's what we're planning to do. There's a lot of steps in between here and there. But next year in the spring, we're planning to use some of this funding that's accumulated to do about three of those intersections, specifically Garfield, Buchanan and Cleveland. And then we'll just continue to chunk away at it as the entitlements come in. I can answer any questions you might have about specifics with the project?
So we must have some questions, don't we?
I have a funding question. So the 561,000 is from funds that haven't been spent from block grants in previous years?
That's correct. We've, we've been trying to spend the, the projects on sidewalk repairs, intersection repairs. And it, it became very cumbersome to do these little small projects with a ton of work associated with them. So we're excited about this year, working in partnership with Public Works. Well, they're doing the bulk of the work and they're doing it really well. I think we're going to be efficient and we'll have good use of the funds and we'll be able to expend them all. So we're excited about getting this, the use of these funds and our administration of it more efficient and more effective for the city.
I know there's a lot of projects out there. I've spent a lot of time with citizens in that area. I'm talking about no ADA ramps for them to get to the downtown core, many visits with Public Works as well as just individually myself. So I know there's a lot of them out there, but this would be a good use of those in that area. Some of those sidewalks are almost 100 years old as well as the roads. So it's maybe time for that love to happen in that area.
And something I might not have mentioned is there's certain national objectives we have to meet when spending this money. That corridor falls on two census blocks that have more than 70% low to moderate income residents on them. And that more than satisfies the requirement for providing an area benefit to low and moderate income residents. The benchmark is 51% or more. So this is a really great spot for these funds to go.
And lastly, just want to note that we do have 130, a little over $130,000 left in COVID community development block grant funding. It has been challenging to spend this money because of the criteria associated with it. It is in our annual action plan this year, and if we can find a way to spend it, we certainly will. But just to note, that is in the annual action plan as well. And the, our requested action is to, we have a suggestion motion for you to approve this plan. We do need it approved tonight. If we don't have it approved tonight, then we will forfeit our, our funds for the program. But any other questions that we can answer for you?
I guess my main question, just purely out of curiosity, as we mentioned, there are many projects, right, that you, that you're looking at. How do you kind of determine and land on this one being the highest priority for this fund?
There are areas that qualify for the community development block grant funds of the city by income categories. And so that is, that narrows it down considerably. Sometimes we can do citywide components, but there's all sorts of criteria associated with this. So, you know, Zach can answer in more detail, but this project is, was an area that qualifies.
Yeah, to expand on that a little bit, we've, in the past, we did first street bikeway improvements on this corridor. It's a very logical connection to our downtown core and the loop trail. We have the, the bridge over the BNSF railroad tracks down there. So making this like an accessible corridor for, for everyone would be not even just for the immediate residents in the low and moderate income census block tracks, but a great improvement for the city as a whole. That's why it's kind of shown to the top as a number one priority for us.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, with Councilmember Euer's question, so do we kind of sometimes look at four or five or are they in particular order? I, I'm just kind of, it's, it is like how the engineers just look at it and say, okay, we're looking at these, we got five of them or 100 of them or whatever, let's narrow it down to where, how this will benefit the most. There must be some type of scoring system or something?
We have lists that we keep where there's, where there's existing sidewalk gaps and things like that, noncompliant ramps. We have a whole survey that's been done in the past. There's not really been too much of a prioritize, priority array done to have landed on this. But this particular corridor is in desperate need of ADA compliant features and walkways in general. And the residents in that area typically tend to be retired. And it's one of the corridors we get the most phone calls about. So that's really, it's, our attention's been on it for a long time.
Okay, that's perfect. At this time, I turn it over to public testimony, if we have any. Back to Mr. Snyder. I got to pick on my friends. Anybody like to comment regarding this specific subject?
I would like to.
You can come up and you get limited to three minutes and you're welcome to comment regarding this, this here.
More questions than it is a comment. I mean, Wenatchee City Hall is here and they improved everything around Wenatchee City Hall. I live the next block over. My block is 10 times worse than where you guys are doing your community involvement and building roundabouts on First Street and all that other stuff. This is, it's crazy to me. The sidewalks down here are all tore up. But yet the neighborhood, I've been there since 91 and I've seen it go from slumlord, low income people to homeowners and still, and they've improved their property and the sidewalks are just junk. And they have this medium divider there for gardens or whatever it was way back when. And it just looks, I mean, it brings the value of the homestone. If you were to go down there and put new sidewalks in, it would improve the property values go right through the roof. But they won't do it because, and I did it for- Anyway, that's my point is how come that neighborhood and not that neighborhood?
Okay, that's, it's just public comment? That's all it is? So, thank you. Any other public testimony comment for the record? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the city council if they'd like to do action?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor, for the city council to approve the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan as presented and to authorize the mayor to sign all associated assurances, certifications and contracts necessary for implementing the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson and second by Councilmember Hornby for city council approve the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan as presented and to authorize the mayor to sign all associated assurances, certifications and contracts necessary for implementing the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Any other comments or discussion from the city council? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Short meeting, mayor's report. We talked about the Purple Heart City. I was, I, I got the privilege to read part of the proclamation, but then also bringing our both cities together and both counties. Recognize, it's kind of fun to, exciting to recognize the whole community for this. And thank you, Councilmember Euer, to kind of get us motivated and continue for that support. So I want to thank you. Councilmember O'Sean, thank you for taking care of last week, for everything, for the duties. And I appreciate all your effort and to be there when I needed a call and get the help out. So I want to make that shout out. Chief Reinfeld left, but there was also National Night Out. Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas, for being down at Cafe. And Councilmember Harold was at Washington. And I'm not sure if I missed some of the others. But it was a good, I guess I heard the best turnout that we ever had in all three parks. And it's a great opportunity to realize a positive thing with our city and our police. So it was a very exciting event. For me, I went to a couple, spoke at a couple of things, Wenatchee Rotary. Also, I'll report East, City of East Wenatchee regarding a few weeks ago about Rivercom and interlocal agreement, they, they also said no, so then that'll go turn back to Rivercom. And that was regarding that they're not going to accept the inter, interlocal agreement either. So that'll go back to Rivercom for changes, so you know. City administrator, what am I, am I missing anything or?
Just two items. We will, you should have gotten an email about the joint session on August 29th with East of Wenatchee. So a couple, last month, was it, no, two months ago in June, we came to the city council with the work session on our approach strategy. This is basically a follow up to that on to what, what are the next steps? Where are we with the homeless position? Where are the pallet shelter projects? Since East Wenatchee is obviously also a contributor to that, we're doing a joint session. It'll also be an opportunity for the public to come and provide any comments. So that should be marked on our calendars for August 29th. Other than that, the mayor and I have been meeting with state representatives on Confluence Parkway to kind of get them up to date as to where we are. And we'll continue to do that over the next couple of months. We'll also be meeting with some federal delegation, hopefully in the coming weeks. So just continuing to have that open conversation about how we continue that project. That's it.
How about reports from the city council? Any meetings gone to?
Yeah. I got the honor to be with the chamber, with the Hispanic Business Council. I wanted to get together with them and so I came to know, I get to know who, who they are, what they do. And I asked them a lot of questions. I'm going to get a feedback from them soon, right? Who, who am I as a council member that, what can I do and what can we work together as, with, with the Hispanic council? And see if we can work together with the community, with all Hispanic businesses and motivate them and have, have some. I, I commented that we, as a public elected officials, we should be involved too with our business councils and business owners to see as what we can do in the future with whatever support that we can provide. I got invited to, to attend their, their meetings monthly. I'm going to see if I can, depending on work. And thank you, thank you for showing up. Appreciate that. That's, it's really nice to see you here too. And I believe that's it.
All right. I had my first two day session for the Washington Collaborative Elected Leaders Institute. It's quite the mouthful, but it was the first of five two day sessions and it was phenomenal. There's 48 total elected leaders from Washington State that have come together to work collaboratively on solving or trying to attempt to solve some key issues that all of our communities are facing. So working together to learn from each other and gain some really valuable insight and knowledge. So it was wonderful. I was exhausted by the end of it and I'm really looking forward to the next session in August.
And that's, Mayor Crawford's on that committee also?
Yeah, she's in, I'm on a group, I'm in a group with Mayor Crawford. I'm also, we have the mayor of Eniatt, mayor of Shalane and the mayor of Cashmere on our group.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that and representing our city.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
I think nothing.
I attended the Historic Preservation Board Meeting the, last night, I guess it was. Interesting just to see what these other commissions do. I was at the Planning Commission the month, back in July. So, yeah.
Great. I think that's it. So I think we're done with all our announcements. The one thing that drives me nuts is next, a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it.
So a motion by Councilmember O'Sean and second by Councilmember Atkinson to adjourn. Any comments or discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Great. Thank you for, everybody for being here. I appreciate it.